While we're writing, I'm gonna tell you all my daughter's birthday is today. She's 48 years old.
Child.
A child. I know you're thinking, "You must have had your daughter when you were just a little guy."
Still a little guy.
I don't need any help from you. Have you all met? Wild Russian?
No.
He's our interim city manager. Today is his first P&amp;Z meetings, so be nice to him.
Well, thanks for stealing my thunder.
I'm sorry, Chairwoman.
Well, with that, I'll officially call the meeting to order if you're ready, Jenny. You ready? Give me a minute, okay?
Yes, we're ready.
Okay. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM the Tuesday, January 6th of Point Running. We have a forum present, Jenny. And with that, we'd like everyone to put their hands in.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. And before I get to public comment, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Coker said. And we'd like to welcome our new interim city manager, Mr. Wild Russian.
Thank you.
Jim, I don't know if we have public comments. At this point, we'd like to offer anyone the opportunity to speak to, don't want to speak about something in general and not necessarily specific to a particular agenda item. And I just uptake this opportunity too to let you know, when we do get to the public hearings and the comments, you're limited to three minutes of speaking time. And we do have a really, really heavy agenda, so we want to make sure we stay on track and keep things moving where we can. But we want to hear everyone who needs to. Is there anyone who would like to speak during public comment?
Yes, sir.
And when you come up, we need you to come to the podium, say your name and address.
Sure. My name is Aziz Kimari. And my address, 653 Racine Drive. Yeah, so my comment is, I think we should have a school. Right now, the kids from Woodridge have to kind of go through this path into their school, into off-point of the major. So whenever we're picking up the kids or dropping off the kids, there are some cars that pass really fast through that area. So I think we need to have some lights or anything that goes on at 2 o'clock or whatever to tell people that, you know, kids will be passing through here coming from the school. So just some people aware, and some people might not be aware that kids are passing through that path. But, you know, I think we should have, just as a safety measure, because I mean, we don't want to have an incident and then we start reacting from them and stuff. Yeah?
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else during public comment? Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to agenda item number four. Consider an act of some minutes from the February 4th, 2025, regular meeting and February 15th, special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We haven't had meetings since February on P&amp;Z, so we'll try to catch up with our meeting. Did y'all have a chance to pick a look at them?
I didn't get the short one anyway.
Yeah, one.
So there's two of them.
There were two of them.
Yeah.
We see anything?
Yeah.
Okay, have a motion?
Move to approve.
So do I have a second? All in favor?
Who's the second?
Uh, who's the second? Kevin.
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 All in favor, aye, it was unanimous, no opposed. Okay, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to agenda item number five. Consider an act of three, a replat of lots 2, 3, 4, 11, 12, and 13 of the George W. Daniel survey, extract number 331. With that, Mr. Coker, did you have some more?
Yes, ma'am. So this is a, it's called a 4W subdivisions up the road here between Neylar and Winchester. Right across basically from the new development that Bloomfield's gonna be doing along Winchester. Goes all the way to Neylar, there is an existing subdivision there called a 4W subdivision. These are existing lots, two of the lots, were sold off. Parts of them were sold off separately without getting replats. But this is a replat then that consolidates two part pieces to make a full lot. And so you're going from what's now four lots to five lots. Which had two parts, small parts. A real replat, and we're relying on this, the new subdivision, should not change anything. Is a minimum of four acres in size, one of them is actually seven acres. So it complies with the zoning.
Zoning is three, correct?
Zoning is three. Complies with the subdivision regulations, complies with the, with the, with the zoning completely. So it complies with the requirements of the state law as far as replating is concerned. Thing I liked about this is there were three platted lots on Neylar. And they retain three platted, not lots on Neylar. And the reason I like that is because I'm trying to minimize the number of entry points, driveways on Neylar between McCormick and Martop. Because we have sufficient traffic coming out of the opposite side. And so that's where we're at. And I reviewed this carefully and I've recommended approval.
You want to have questions?
Oh, wait, one more thing. Y'all know that you have limited opportunities when it comes to plaques. And you've got three plaques on the agenda today. I want to say this just one time for everybody to remind you all. And I promised the mayor that I would do this. You can approve a plat, you can approve a plat with conditions, or you can disapprove it. If you don't approve it outright, then, let's say you approve it with conditions. You have to be specific about the conditions that they failed to comply with or that they need to fix. The same thing applies if you disapprove it. Disapproved, you have to identify specifically what it is that they failed to comply with. And then the applicant has unlimited time to fix it and bring it back to you. So in this particular case, and not all of these, I have reviewed these and I've recommended approval, no conditions.
Appreciate that. Appreciate the honor, thank you.
I've got a question. Can you, we got one, two, three, four on Neylar, right? Yes, no, isn't that it?
Well, there is, it looks like.
I think there's three on Neylar and one on Winchester.
We have four, what's the bottom one?
It belongs to someone else.
Oh, yeah, that, the line, is that, one of the things I asked the surveyor to do, report with critiques for final, is to make the lot there.
There you go.
A dark line on the, I can see on our iPad that separates that last.
Yeah, it's a darker one.
It's a darker line. It's not showing up on the screen.
The cursor's on there.
That one right there.
There you go.
And I've asked the surveyor to change the exterior lines to be much darker for this because these are, these are the lot lines.
Okay, so you've got the, kind of, the colored line one.
This one here is a lot.
Right.
And it picks up a portion of this lot, which was lot 12, I think, and 11, and this part of lot 12. And these are two pieces that are owned by the same family. And they sold off these parts without the benefit of a replat. So ultimately, I've contacted them and asked them to go ahead and submit a request for administrative replat because they're the same property owners, just get taxed.
It's gonna come up?
Come up as one.
Come up as one. I mean, it comes up as two parcels when you look at head. But by amending it administratively, I think it'll be better for us. It's better for them if they decide to sell.
Well, I agree with what you said about the approach on the Neylar.
Yeah, these, these were basically the original lots. They changed them a little bit, they increased some sizes and decreased some sizes. But they're, they're all, these three are in addition of four, four plus acres. And I've got this, this one here is, I think around seven, and this one's about five. So it's a pretty good size, it's chunky like.
It's nice that we're retaining some of the substantial size.
And Greg Mills is the, is Mills here?
I thought he was gonna be here.
Yeah.
But I don't see him. Oh, you are, okay, there he is.
You're, you're improving the look of this property, right?
I believe so.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Okay, a motion to consider act of, to approve, yes. To approve. To approve. A replat of lots 2, 3, 4, 11, 12, and 13. Yes. Of the George W. Daniel survey, abstract 331.
Bill's second? Bill's second? Thank you.
Michael, do we get color coded? It was not? On, on lonesome Dutch.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to item number six. Consider an act of three of preliminary plans for the southeast corner of Dixon Lane and Sunset Cove, Sanctuary Point Development.
As you know, we've gone through this process for the last couple of years and worked really closely with the developer and with the neighborhood out there. We've had two or three different applications came through with significantly more density than Sanctuary Point. Sanctuary Point worked with neighbors, applied for a planned development district that had minimum lot sizes of one acre, which was consistent with our comprehensive plan recommendations. Got a lot of support from the neighborhood. And this is their preliminary plat for that. Now, the one that follows this is their site plan, the development plan, not the landscape plan. But that's what, this is a preliminary plat, remember? You have choices, approved, disapproved, approval with conditions.
I just have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
One, we did get verification from Undine, you used to be Chairperson. Undine, that there was no issues with supporting water supply?
We did, I have it in writing.
Okay. And then on the streets, the plaques show, the part I'm concerned about is, you know, from just south of Dixon on around and then clear down Sunset Cove. It shows roads, nice roads there, and now that the road goes through without a cul-de-sac. Is that in the plan to, it's gonna be a real road, or?
It's a real road. As a matter of fact, when I was doing the staff report, I put the original plan, the concept plan in that added two cul-de-secs, which is, is kind of nice, but it's not what the preliminary plan called for. The preliminary plan called for it to be connected. And when I pulled up the ordinance that the council can consider, I mean, quite worth it. It has this diagram. And so that was the approved concept plan.
Right.
That has a real road that connects all the way over.
But my concern is that the improvements to Sunset Cove and as a, is that, is that something Brian's gonna do? Or is the city committed to doing that, or just?
If I had my brothers.
I live over in that area, obviously.
If I had my brothers, I'd have Brian do it, I suspect we'll work together with the developer to get it done. That was some of the feedback we got from residents at that time. So you'd have to drive off the ditch, less about the passion.
Right, it wasn't.
Well, we're getting the right away that I need throughout, all the way over to the end of their property on the north end. And Brian's going to be doing some of the improvement along Dixon's, Dixon side. And they're still, still in shorts and right away on the, on the citizen, but I will now have all of my right of way required with Dixon Park.
Does somebody have a question?
We'll buy it if I say it.
Brian, and if you've got questions, he's here, he can answer them.
I know, I saw him.
But I got Dean to help me on the other side, so we'll see, hopefully.
Okay.
I've been begging you now, so.
And I think all the, all the residents are happy with it and it's kind of exciting.
Yeah, I'm excited to start it, so. When I was out there, before I came here, that the flags are out there. And I drove down Sunset Cove, had to back into somebody's driveway to turn around. And once I hit the road, it's like, I had a lot of trouble.
Definitely, for sure. Okay, are there any other questions? You know? With that, do I have a motion?
I've got a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the preliminary plaques to the southeast corner of Dixon Lane and Sunset Cove. A second?
Okay, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Proudly unanimous, but that will go on to item number seven, which is consider that recommend approval for the development site plan, no landscape plan.
That's correct.
And so, no at the site plan.
No at the site plan.
Just the development plan, basically.
That's right. This is, this is the plan that gets the streets, the drainage, the infrastructure in place. It's for lots graded, I suspect. Although I know that Brian's doing his level best to save as many streets as he can. Because that was a commitment that he made to everybody a couple of years ago. I've reviewed this, and I checked with Lee Allison, he's our city engineer. Staff recommendations for approval.
Are there any questions?
I've got one question. There's a lot of conversation on the drainage on the north side of Dixon. And one of these, I guess the topo shows some culverts and drainage. Does that work for me yet? Because I know it's problematic in terms of how it's.
So we're current, sorry.
Come on up here, please. Come up here.
Kara's with McAdams, and if you don't know what she knows.
Kara, Kara.
Okay. We need to meet this person.
We didn't respond to her, but I had no idea what she had.
Kara King with McAdams, the address is 4400 State Highway 121, Suite 800, useful text is 75056. So to answer your question with our new break, this is a drainage one for Dixon. We are taking into account the swells north of Dixon. We are replacing the culverts that go underneath Dixon because they appear to not exist, are in terrible condition. So we will be regrading water to go to those and underneath, replacing those entirely. So that fixes that issue, and the water goes underneath Dixon through Sanctuary Point and also the club into the south.
Because I remember, it wasn't, it had bullet holes, so there's really nothing there.
Couldn't get to the light.
Yeah, so what you do is these two culverts are direct from down to pass to your new roadway. And so that takes advantage of the drainage.
Those culverts, the culvert on Sunset had a few, right? Kara?
See one of them.
So see the two, right?
I talked to her.
There are two on Dixon.
Yeah, see the two, they're right, right on, those are the two.
Those are good sites.
You can't really see them until you blow it up. And even on my report, it doesn't come up so well, but there's two culverts right up there.
And then also, do you have good information on the drainage area, which I take into account in the north?
That's the name of the answer.
Yeah, so the drainage areas, but she, it's our plans that we provided, take into account the whole drainage area that is coming into those culverts. And those pipes are sized to accept that drainage area.
And they have submitted those civil drawings to Lee Allison. And that is first review, and I have very few comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee Allison's our city engineer. When I, when I can't mess it up, I ask for help.
Okay. Well, I guess I make a motion to approve the development plan for Sanctuary Point. Any second?
Second.
They, they want a second. All in favor? Your votes? I think it's approved. Okay, with that, we'd like to move on to item number eight. Consider an act to approve a preliminary plat for Chapel Hill Plaza at the corner of FM 720 and Martop.
Yes, ma'am. This preliminary plat, while the picture running left to right, it actually runs up north and south on 720. From Martop down to the Montessori School property on the south end, before you get to the commercial stuff on the corner. It's preliminary plat. They have submitted their engineering to me. He has not given me a final report on the preliminary plat, but he has recommended approval of the preliminary plat. I reviewed it for compliance with the planned development district, the subdivision regulations, and the agreement that we have with the developer for this property. And with that, we're recommending approval with no conditions. Once again, three things, approval, approval with conditions, this approval. This is a, we're recommending approval with no conditions.
I have a question on that one. With all the work on the 720 overlay activities, which is not completed yet, does this account for those activities that are going on, or how is that? Because this is where I didn't.
They, they, in Boulder, did not take into account the 720 overlay because this was off, started about two years ago. And before y'all started working on the overlay. But if they wanted to change from planned development district 21 to something else, then the overlay would be applicable.
But because it was done prior to them?
Right.
We don't have to say.
Well, we don't, you can't apply it to their current zone.
I wondered about that, whether that was in the.
Only extent is if they changed the zone. That's when the overlay kicks in. But these guys have got the zoning that we worked hard to get them. We just start out as the Blue Bill project. So this is, this is the commercial side. And PD 21 has some really good standards for design. And the land uses that are allowed under that planned development district are fairly consistent with what you're gonna see in the overlay when it's hot.
And that precedent is already there, right, pretty much.
The drive?
The drive.
Well, it is, they're building it now.
Yeah.
And your next base is on this piece of property right there.
Yeah, okay, that's the one next to that. Any other questions?
I've called the retention, detention, or whatever it's called, is that?
A little west of the north side of this property.
It is.
Okay, so it's not on this property.
No, in fact, it's, Chris, if you.
It's behind the wall.
Yeah, right, it's right in there. And it's fairly substantial. You can see how that, towards the, it catches all of that. Ultimately, ends up going down out here and down through that city property. I get a Shanderry and further on south of the way.
Any other questions? Do you want to have a motion?
Make a motion to approve a preliminary plat for Chaparral Plaza at the corner of FM 720 and Martop Road.
Do I have a second? Jerry's second? All those in favor? Okay. Unless she passes, thank you. Okay, agenda item number nine. Consider act of approval of development site plan and concept plan for Chaparral Plaza, at the corner of FM 720 and Martop.
And Madam Chair, what they have to include in this case is they supplied both the concept plan and the development plan for phase one concurrently on the same application. So I delve within that way. I'm recommending approval of the concept plan because it can be changed administratively at any speed in accordance with PD 21. But the phase one development plan is this.
So that takes it.
Right. So here's Martop, over to the left-hand side, right there. There's 720. And there's that main entryway that we're talking about. And school, I think it's here.
Michael, did he point out all of the entryways on the 720?
Just for this, we've got one here, which is right in, right out. This one, there's a median fed up here in 720. Everything else, as you head south to the intersection of McCormick, is right in, right out.
Just right turn on, okay.
Right turn in, right turn out. And what we are requiring is, you see how this, this is a shared access segment that goes all the way up to Martop? We're gonna require that all the way down through until you get to the, and as a matter of fact, the Montessori School has the same requirement coming over for the shared access.
Oh, okay.
Bloomfield is, where?
Behind there.
Behind, oh.
Bloomfield's all this over here, this is the residential.
Right.
There's a big.
Is that road coming through there, and that's gonna be going?
That's access to.
Bloomfield, yes, sir.
It is. And there's another main entrance to Bloomfield down on top of his head, like that.
There's one off of Martop and there's one off of.
There's two off of.
Two off. But that's the only one on 720.
Right.
Into the.
That's right. And you can see, we require a double, double-wide entry off of 720 because it's really fire access, emergency access to get us into the commercial parts of this thing. Then it chokes right down to a neighborhood street, right at the wall, right there.
Michael, did I hear you right to say that that, that road will continue down through that parking lot area? So is that configuration going to change? Because you said.
This, this comes like this.
No, no, I'm talking about the.
Road access.
Yeah, from Martop, it comes up and over. I thought I heard you say it was gonna continue on.
No, it'll come like this. It'll come through that parking lot to this, this point of access.
Okay, all right, so it's gonna use the parking lot for egress?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that.
Yeah, it's not gonna cut across that, is it?
No, I'm just, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm glad you brought that up, because if you didn't ask that kind of question, most people would think what they heard was a straight cut, but it's not. They're gonna move it around like this, and this is where the curmugs is down.
Michael, are there still plans to put a light up the corner of Martop and 720?
Yes, sir. In fact, the engineering is done for that. The county has put up that half, I think Ashland's put up their third. And I think we've set aside our portion of it probably next year before we see the light. But it is planned and is approved.
So I appreciate the deceleration lengths. I would say that, I French would be, that we don't have so many access points out of this area onto 720. It just starts to feel kind of like, when you're driving through Little Elm and every business has one or two access points on the other auto. But then if you're going through Briscoe, your businesses are set back and there's like some control access points. And then the second comma I have is public safety. And I don't know who would maybe answer that, but when you're coming, if you're on Martop Road and you're looking to the left at traffic coming at you going 50, 55, probably faster, for realistic. And then you move down, just moving a little further, and you've got that point where you're leaving this area on the Oak Road Parkway, and you're looking to even make a right. You can't really see that far back behind you on the traffic that's coming down over Parkway Front and the road. So that's two comments that are concerning for me.
This, this is my second favorite, least favorite intersection in the city. The other one's right outside.
I've had to deal with it many times, but it's a problem.
This is right in, right out.
The angle is just.
Right here, right in, right out. Because this is a solid median right here. So this is, and this will be, there's right in, right out, right here. And there's this cross, this is the only break in the median right here until you get down to the corner. And what I'm pushing for, Tony, can you pull up that preliminary plat again for this? The one that's just ahead of this? Stoplight, okay? So what I've got is a driveway that's gonna happen here. So, what I've got is a driveway that's going to happen here, we've got this here, and I'm going to allow for one more driveway in this section for right in, right out. So I'm minimizing the number of interactions at 720 with the private, with exiting. And the reason that this is important is our comp plan says that we want to minimize the number of driveways on collectors and on roadways, this is called 720 Highway. So we're minimizing the number of opportunities for conflicts between southbound cars on 720 and people coming in and out of the commercial side of this property. And I think, I would not be surprised that in a few years, when the traffic gets to where I know what's headed, we might end up with another line here at that, that main intersection. But right now, Chris, what we're trying to do is minimize the number of interactions with the southbound traffic on 720.
The concept plan, the concept, not the development. It shows the...
On the concept plan, yeah, so what they were saying is, if you go back down to the concept plan, it shows two...
South of Chaparral.
On, yeah, south of the Chaparral Drive.
Go to the right, scroll, go to the right.
Well...
But on the concept plan?
No, I think it's...
We're blowing this up.
Yeah, see, there's two here, plus this one here. I'm probably going to resist this.
Okay, so this is, this is concept, so it's not a...
And when they, so phase one is this development here, and you're going to be talking about Primo's, which is here. When we get, I'm not happy with this, because it's too close to this.
Right.
I'm sorry, you're not happy with it?
He's not happy with this.
Okay. This, this driveway is, is, in my estimation, too close to the main driveway there.
So what are your thoughts on where you want it to go left?
This one?
Yeah.
I think, I think I need this, because there's these two, and then there's two more lots to the left, or there's just one more lot.
It's, it's a, that curve, you can't really see what's coming at you if you pop around.
He's just saying, he's saying when you're coming south on 720.
The future light will help control the gaps when you can kind of...
We'll have our light in here before they get this through.
Is it possible I'm going to move that down? No, you're saying that's really the best place for it, best for them.
I think it's a good place for it, but we can work with the plan, see where we can put it. Because I, I'm going to be working with it about this one here.
That's an anticipated gas station right there on the corner, right? So, that user's going to want it to turn in.
Because you don't want it getting closer to that double block, Chaparral. Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
What, as we, before we make a motion, do we make a motion, do we, well, yeah, the condition, conditional, okay? In process, you get a motion, get a second, your chairperson will say you've got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? And that's where you start making amendments or conditions in the meeting.
And can we do them both at once, or do we do each one and do each one development and concept?
My recommendation is doing separately, it'll make it a whole lot easier for...
Your conditioning part?
Yes, especially for me and whoever has to follow up, you know, engineering, construction, city secretary.
So, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, my number nine is, development site plan and concept.
Not, not concept.
And site plan at the corner of FM 720 and Martop.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional comments or input?
Make, uh, do I make a motion, or do I just say my comments?
No, if you're going to have a condition, it needs to be in motion.
I make, I make a motion.
No, I move.
Help me out here. I'm just trying to help, no, no.
Wait a minute, where are we at? Are we still on the site plan? We have a motion and a second on the site.
On the development.
On the development, development site.
Right, and now they're discussing, discussing, and if they want to amend that, then they need to...
Okay, so, yeah, if you'll direct.
So he's got some info on that.
I made a motion, I move, thank you, I move to have the development plan amended to allow one access exit point only south of the Chaparral Drive. How about you?
Yeah, but, but we have a motion on the...
We just have to, we have to decide if we want to amend our motion to incorporate this as a condition.
So is...
Or withdraw the original...
Let's have to start out, let's do this. Chris, I move to amend the motion on the table, on the floor.
There we go.
By requiring the removal of the first driveway south of Chaparral Drive.
I move to amend the motion on the floor to amend the driveway entrances, remove the first driveway south of Chaparral Drive.
Now, do we have a second on that?
He seconded it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right, everybody understands that you voted to approve the amended motion.
And then now it goes to council, and they decide if they want to leave that driveway.
The first driveway?
Yes, first grade, first driveway, south of Chaparral. I didn't get it the first time.
Okay, now we need a motion on concept plan.
Well, actually, this is the concept plan.
Oh, yeah, that one, the development plan.
Is just for the phase one.
Actually, we should have stuck with our first one.
Yeah, so, you probably need to...
We need to go back, we need to... Oh, sorry.
Johnny, how do we get the motion that's been approved off the table?
John, you're the expert.
We, we approved, and we thought we were approving this and amending this, but this is the concept plan, and what we amended was the development plan, which is really for Chaparral.
Oh, but, no, but that's okay, because that, it's still good, because the development plan does show that entrance. So we're, so we're good, so now we're good to go to the concept.
To the concept.
And do the same thing. I would like to make, I would like to make a motion to approve the concept plan for Chaparral Plaza at the corner of FM 720 and Martop Road with the condition that we eliminate the entrance as shown south of Chaparral, north, the first entrance north of Chaparral.
South.
The first entrance south of Chaparral.
Yeah.
It's north? Oh, we're leaving, okay. Oh, we're talking about this one, yeah, okay, all right. Okay.
And, and they've already got a, for this property area, they've already got a gas station that they're, that they're working.
Eliminating the first drive.
Right there.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Wait, thank you. All in favor? Yes, takes a village. Okay, now we're going to move on to agenda item number 10. Consider act of recommend approval of a development plan, landscape plan, and facade plan for the Primo's School at FM 720 and Martop. So that one was just getting on the road.
It's the first lot.
South of Chaparral.
Pull, pull that down just a little bit.
I'm stuck.
I did say south, but I think someone was... And that's...
It worked, the computer's giving me trouble here.
In your packet, it shows you where it's at.
I see.
Too many graphics.
It's on the north side of Chaparral Drive, and I, I was telling you it was on the south side, it's on the north side. And we reviewed this, the development plan, the facade plan, and the landscape plan, applies with our landscape requirements, our facade requirements, and the Plan Development District requirements for landscaping adjacent to 720. This landscape plan and facade plan all comply with the regulations that were imposed on this property. So the recommendation is for approval.
So just, and looking at the building, where, I mean, since it's a daycare, right, school?
Yeah, and daycare.
So, the drop-off points, is it, I see the parking lot part, so, because you said that one road's going to come along that exit.
And it goes up, right. I'm going to let, say, get me out of those.
There you go.
Good evening, Clay Christie, Clay Martin, 1903, St. John Drive, Bedford. Um, so it's Primo's School, Primo's Daycare, you were talking about drop-offs and different things like that. So, Primo's does it actually, and a lot of actually daycares are going to this model, but it's not the old-school model of like you pull through a drive to keep your kids out of cars, somebody picks them up and goes in. Um, it's actually required that whenever you go to drop off, a parent has to physically park in the parking space, take the car out, and order them into your facility, to the facility. So, if you look at our site plan, it's up there, there's not like a pull-through, drop-off location, because they don't have a break that way.
Okay.
Is how they do it. And so, um, just, times have changed, things have changed, and from safety hazards of kids, especially when we're talking about as daycare, this young kid getting out of cars, it's just become a liability, and they have to do that. And so, they actually have, typically, there's even a key code on the door where the parents type a key code, so that they have access to the door, and the doors are unlocked otherwise.
That was my concern, was being, not only on the highway, but also with that.
I knew where you were going with it.
Yeah.
It's a lot of people being jumped up here.
Appreciate that.
Still, as you looked at this, in the design, did you know that that was going to be a thoroughfare from the gas station north of there?
Um, it's been contemplated, and that's not uncommon through other Primo's that we have, that you have shared access to the common elements, just as commercial development in general has, has changed from, I believe it was Mr. Fisher that had mentioned that, um, you know, everybody used to have their own driveway, and you were separated out and have their own lot. Um, commercial development, the last 10, 15 years has changed where you've had that common access drive and that shared between. And so, yes, sir, we, we worked, Boulder, a case beforehand, from the intersection of 720, allow for stacking, allow for access, there's a median there to try to get cars, so it's not somebody turning off 720 and immediately meeting another driveway, as well as whenever they're exiting out, if, you know, if you're at a higher, you know, higher traffic time period that you're trying to get out of there, if you have a couple cars stacked back in there, you're not just sitting in the driveway waiting, it's pretty much as far away as we can so that they can get through and access that drive.
I wouldn't be opposed to it, but are you planning to be type of traffic calming devices in the driveway there?
Not currently, right now. Um, like I said, I don't, I don't know that we'll have that. If, if it does become an issue, that may be something that we can evaluate. Um, Primo's is very proactive with their franchisees and stuff like that, promoting types of safety, different things of that nature, to where we can promote, or you kind of, put a traffic calming, a little speed bumps and different things like that. The reason why we typically don't put it in to start is going back to safety and different things, you have little kids that are walking, they're learning to walk, and the more obstacles you put, if they're walking across there, if they trip and fall on, or, you know, they run, you know, if they're running in between cars, they trip and fall on it. So, we don't have that right now. If it does become an issue, I think that's something we can definitely evaluate.
Let me have been, Clay, the fact that they've got these two 90-degree turns?
Yeah.
They, they act as a traffic calming device on their own, and before you get to anything that's to the north, that would be their second point of access.
That's a great point, yeah.
So, I think that that, that design helps a lot.
This is a franchise?
Oh, yes, sir, all, all Primo's are franchised, they're, they're controlled by Primo's, so they're academics and different things, they have programs, if they require, they hold standards to what they have, but, um, the, all, all Primo's across the country are franchise-owned, and then, um, they have, like, all franchisees have to go to get particular trainings, and they also have to meet certain thresholds in order to retain that.
I have experience with Primo's and a couple of other jurisdictions where I work, and they have always been a good, a good overseer of their franchisees, because we, I've never been disappointed with one of their products.
Now, is this a daycare and a school, or?
What's a daycare? So, it's, they call it Primo's School, but it's not like an elementary school or something like that. It'll facilitate kids, you know, from essentially kind of your newborn stage up to elementary school, um, and then sometimes depending upon the facility and proximity, you have, say you have a, say you have one of your kids at the four-year-old class, and they have a six-year-old class, sometimes they'll bring, you know, from school, that, like, first grader, kindergarten, or something like that, might come over, and then the next kid comes up.
Okay, any other questions? Landscaping looks good, sufficient, that's one of our big things.
It looks more than sufficient, they, they actually exceed our requirements.
I, I could tell that, that's good, we appreciate that, thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to approve a developmental plan, landscape plan, facade plan for Primo's School at FM 720.
One second.
Say that.
This second? All in favor? Not those, pass, thank you.
And I would just point out, considering conditions, they have a patient at the medical Montessori School, just in the side, with, with access on the same drive.
Yes.
And the Goddard, the Goddard School is, is at the far southern end of that, but they're here well, they don't...
Well, for Montessori School.
Okay. Agenda item number 11. We're going to have a public hearing now to discuss your comments regarding ordinance amending the comprehensive plan relating to approximately 390 acres of land in the GW Daniel survey, Delium Daniel survey, Huntersbridge addition, and Oak Point CBS addition. By imposing an overlay district on state approximately 394 acres of land to be known as the FM 720 Ford Lloyd Young overlay district. And, do I open hearing and then have Michael speak, or have him speak?
I think we need to have Mr. Cooper speak first.
Well, I'd like to have Mr. Cooper kind of brief everyone a little bit on just exactly what an overlay district is, and about how it doesn't change existing zoning, because I think there's maybe a little bit of confusion, and it will help all of us understand what this does and doesn't do, and hopefully explain why we think it's needed now, because it's not necessarily in areas, especially where it's not zone commercial, so this is how it's going to protect us and, and help us moving forward in the future. Mr. Cooper?
And, and we've been working on this for a couple of years, because we wanted to really start managing the type of commercial development that we have. This, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask the author of this document to come up here and walk us through this, because she did a great job.
I do want to say one thing too, before Deborah starts. Um, just a minute ago, Michael was talking, Mr. Cooper was talking about...
Michael is not ready.
Michael, the, the corner that we were talking about, and how we were pretty much bound by the zoning and the requirements that are in place now for that corner that we were looking at. And that's because we don't have an overlay district, we can't impose any additional standards on how they build it, what they build, or how it's positioned, that kind of thing. And so, this was a good, real-time example of how we don't have an overlay district in place now, and so we are bound by what's existing when they come forward with zoning. So we can't impose anything extra once they come. So, with that, I'll, okay, turn it over to Deborah Armstrong.
Okay, I'm Deborah Armstrong, 650 Alexandria. Um, I am president of the EDC, and...
As a economic development corporation.
Yes, and as Michael said, we have been working on this overlay district for over two years. And when I say we, it has been a collective effort between P and Z, EDC, council, and members of Parks Board, and we put a lot of, um... And we put a lot of, um, time and effort for, really to address the needs of the community and all the concerns that we have. Um, so that's first, that I want to talk through. And so there's been a lot of discussion on chat boards regarding this overlay district. And, you guys can read this, but really, an overlay district...
You can't read it, let me, let me see if I can make it clear.
Yeah, I can't read it even with my glasses on.
No, I don't think I can.
That's good. That's, that's as good as it's gonna get, y'all.
So, um, really, you can't put that little plus right there in the middle of the page? That makes that one?
There we go.
I was like, I know!
All right, that's it.
So it, an overlay lays over existing zoning. And the reason why we did this is we wanted to be able to have, um, we wanted to be able to meet the, to be able to address the voice of everyone in this community that says, we don't want to look like 380, we don't want to look like Little Elm, which is a sea of parking lots and a sea of retail strip malls. We didn't want that. So the only way we could do this is to try to put an overlay on it that says, hey, how do what are our green space requirements? We want green space, because we want Oak Point to be distinctive and unique. Everybody says a country place, well, a country place is really made of a green space, not a sea of concrete, right? So what's our green space requirements? How do we regulate the building design so you don't have flat? You have areas where buildings kind of float in and out, so we address that. We talked about placement, corner placements, what's the landscaping around? What's the buffer on 720? How do you have parking? And you'll notice on some of those that we saw up here that the overlay won't address, it's just flat parking in front of the building. We didn't say that in the overlay district. So the overlay district overlays the code. Now, you're correct, a lot of people said, hey, the overlay does not match the zoning. You're right, in some cases it doesn't. And when it doesn't, the zoning, the base zoning applies. But the reason we did that was intentional. We did it to protect ourselves, so as if the base zoning changes, we have the standards in place ready to apply. It was intentional to protect future growth, protect changes, because I've been here 29 years, and I'll tell you, every time we have to go back and readjust something, it's like, oh, we forgot that, and now it doesn't apply. So the overlay overlays and puts the standards that we want in place to protect the uniqueness of this community, doesn't take away from the zoning, but if zoning applies, zoning changes, the overlay applies, and we have all the standards that we want for the looking ones.
Do not leave the podium. I want you to, you've got an example of four corner lots on Martin Gale. I want you to talk about that.
Okay.
Because that's a, that's a question that's come up multiple times, once since I've been here today.
Yes, so on Martin Gale, two years ago when we started, there wasn't a house there. There was a house there. But what we did is on long 720, because we thought 720 was the greatest risk of going commercial and looking a little bit different in the future, what we said was, everything on 720, we want the overlay to apply for, apply to, if the zoning matches, right, it'll apply. So right now, those four corners on Martin Gale are zoned as what I had in mind.
PD5.
PD5, sorry. The overlay doesn't apply, but if they ever change, the zoning ever changes, the overlay applies. That's really simply what it is. The same thing with part of the polo fields. Part of the polo fields, they're zoned in and out.
Right.
Ag, if for whatever reasons in 10 years a portion of that changes, the overlay applies. So really, that's it. The zoning, the overlay does not trump them.
It is supplemental if there's a change to the base.
Yeah.
And it really only kicks in when there's a change to the base.
And it protects us in the future. If someone tells a portion of the polo field to a developer, at that point, they would come in and request a zoning change, and that overlay will already be in place, so they'll have those requirements.
Right, and so it just protects us.
And a lot of the polo field on down, you know, a lot of it's ETJ even now. We just have a little piece of, of playing right now.
And that's the other thing we did. We took it all the way down through ETJ, because we don't know what's gonna happen in 10, 20 years from now, but the overlay will apply when things changes. That's really what it is, it protects yourself. I call it an insurance policy.
And I think she did a fantastic job, that's a pretty good explanation.
Thank you.
I don't have to do my public...
Can I have my...
At this point now, I need to officially open.
Yes.
Before you start, there's one more thing I want to talk about. This public hearing that you're about to open is for a, a modification to the comprehensive plan, future land use plan, okay? That is not zoning. So the language that I purposely put into this agenda item is not a zoning ordinance. For this agenda item, it is an amendment to the future land use plan for a corridor overlay plan, okay? And, and for those of you who are in the, in the, who don't understand the difference between those things, the comprehensive plan is a guide that the city adopts periodically to provide guidance to me and to you about what they expect to see in the future. And a component of that is called a future land use plan. And the future land use plan will say something like, um, we, we want, uh, if it's ever changed in zoning, that right across the street, Catty Corner, uh, which is right now eight acres, part of a planned development district, that requires three, three acre lots, that's what's over there. Say that they wanted to change it to one acre lots. That comprehensive plan, the future land use plan, if it said that the future should be one acre lots, then you could apply for a change in zoning to make it one acre lots. And, and the council, the P&amp;Z would consider it, recommend it, the council would consider it and approve it or not. So that, what they're doing with this is we're amending the comprehensive plan, the future land use part, to say that if somebody changes the zoning out there at those four corners on, on Martin Gale, they're gonna have to comply with this set of rules. Now, these rules are the comprehensive plan. And the interesting thing about comprehensive plans is state law says that zoning shall conform to the comprehensive plan. So if you didn't have a plan, a future land use plan, said this is what we expect, somebody could come in and ask for a change in zoning to, to commercial, and they would not comply with the comprehensive plan. But ours does, and we enforce it. And so what the, what they're gonna listen to you now about is a change to the, in addition to the comprehensive plan, not a change to it, but in addition to the comprehensive plan, a future land use map plan that would include the commercial corridor overlay plan. And now, uh...
Okay, so I'd like to open, agenda item number 11, open the public hearing at 6:57 PM. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this particular one? I don't think I have anyone. I've got a couple of comments, but it's probably more applying to the zoning portion, not the comprehensive, which would be the, uh, the next issue we're gonna pick up. Agenda item number 13. So if you, no, no one wants to speak on this, on the comprehensive? Okay.
Did you open it?
Close.
Yeah.
Close the public hearing at 6:58. And now we need to move on to number 12, which would be a recommendation of approval. So, um, I guess I'm gonna just go ahead and make a motion to recommend approval of an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan relating to approximately 394 acres of land in the GW Daniel survey, W McNeil survey, the Hunter's Ridge addition, and the Oak Point CBS addition. By imposing an overlay district on said approximately 394 acres of land to be known as the Upend 720 corridor zoning overlay district.
No, change, change that to corridor overlay, overlay plan, because comprehensive cannot be zoning. As a matter of fact, you're required right at the front of it to say, shall not be zoning.
Okay, so when do, everything that said up to, when it be known as the Upend 720...
Commercial corridor overlay.
Commercial corridor.
Overlay plan.
That's what 11 is for.
That's 11, that's what 11 is for, because when you get to 13 and 14, it still is zoning, so that's it.
Is it zoning?
Yes.
Okay. Take a second. All in favor? Opposed? With that, we're gonna move on to agenda item number 13, which is a public hearing regarding the zoning of the same property we just discussed. And with that, I want to say, I do have some input from, let me open the public hearing at 7 o'clock, officially. And I do have a couple of people who submitted, a couple residents submitted information, just so that everyone knows here. We have four that were in favor, two were opposed. I don't know if they're here, so there might be a better understanding of it, and I'll do it. And one was neutral, because they said they just didn't really understand what it meant. So I just wanted to provide that info. And with that, I have, I want to open it up. Is there any public comment? Anyone want to speak on the zoning proposal of the overlay district?
Can you clarify what this is right now, the zoning of the...
The overlay.
This is the overlay district, it's not, it's just creating the overlay.
So this is where we can say if we oppose the, the particular zoning?
Well, if you oppose the overlay district and you would like to speak, yes, this would be the time.
Okay, I think I would like to...
Okay, then we need to...
Come on up here.
And state your name and address.
I live at 213 Martin Gale, my name is Scott Mar. And I was concerned about the overlay of the four lots in Martin Gale, how they are marked as mixed use, and I just wouldn't like to oppose that if possible, because I know that it's intended to protect that. I, I'd just rather it be like the other corridor residential, if possible, so I just wanted to...
Well, okay.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah, well, okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on that?
I'm actually here for the Thomason, except that I'll, on this one, does this, on Dallas Rock City, five year time war, does this overlay impact the development of the Thomason to have any changes to the spot?
No, it's, it's a whole different area, it doesn't stand out.
Okay, cool.
But that public hearing's coming up next.
Yes, sir, it is.
I've got her, I've got her form. Okay, any other...
Is it possible to ask a question without having to go?
Sure.
I have a question. So the four lots on Martin Gale, they're not being rezoned. Is there an issue, is there a question of rezoning?
No.
By Mr. Marson.
They are zoned residential currently. It's just sometime in the future, correct me if I say anything wrong, sometime in the future with this overlay, if someone decides to, like, say the one that doesn't have, I don't know who owns it, but the lot on the other, or side of there, that doesn't have houses, they sell it to a developer and they want to come in and build something, and they would have to request it to be rezoned first of all, and that would have to be approved, which...
And we would get a...
And that would, yeah, so that's a whole separate process to be first rezoned. If they were successful in rezoning it to commercials, then the overlay would apply. Only then would it come into play. But it's just because if they come in and request zoning, and we don't have this in place, now we can't even tell them what it can look like and all that. We don't have that much latitude.
I think I understand.
Yeah, it's just, it's just an insurance policy, like I said. It's just, we're trying to anticipate, because we don't want to get stuck with whatever the developers want to do.
Okay, now you can talk.
Uh, Chris Pickright 20.
I want you to come up here. I want to know who you are. I want to be able to chase you down.
Oh, yeah? You're looking a little... Uh, Chris Pickright 20, Martin Gale. Um, I live right at Dan Markville, so this is public in February, and my neighbor Scott promotes. I don't understand why you can't just leave it as residential. I mean, we, we like the way it is, we bought houses, he built a house here, wherever we want to be. We don't want, uh, more commercial coming up behind us like McDonald's did. That, that's a real store sign, by the way, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I definitely don't want to look next door and see a burger team. It's just not appealing. If you gotta go ahead and change the zoning, well, we're... So, that was my...
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Just to be clear, we're not changing the zoning.
Yeah, we're putting it in place where the... We just don't understand why, we just don't understand why it didn't say corridor residential on the four lots instead of the mixed use. Why didn't they stay in the yellow instead of moving to orange, is what we all understand.
I'm not answering that.
Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we are changing the zoning.
Right.
There's no...
But why doesn't the overlay step up?
Okay, so let's just say this. If, if in any of the future, someone comes to P&amp;Z and the zoning's changed, and right now the overlay said residential, and they change it, and I'm not saying they, you all, I'm saying the future board changes it, the overlay, we have no guidelines on that burger team that's put next to it. And I can't, so all I'm saying is, no one's changing the zoning.
Right.
If I put it as residential in a overlay, which really doesn't, really, the overlay doesn't really consider it residential, because it's mostly for commercial, because you really want to dictate and control how the commercial is done. So if it ever got changed, and God, I hope it doesn't, but I, I don't know if I'm here 20 years from now, I don't know where I'm gonna be, I don't know where you're gonna be. I hope to God it doesn't change. But if some P&amp;Z changes it, and no one comes up here and says anything, they can build whatever they want. And I don't, we don't have control over what it looks like, we don't have control over the colors, we don't have control over the, we don't have control over anything that it looks, everything's thrown out. So it was purposely just to protect. No one's changing the zoning. I hope to God it never changes. So even if I left it, even if we didn't touch it, put anything over it, it, it would, it could potentially still happen, just without the standards, right?
Once they come in and try to change it, it's too late to...
It's my last question. Deed restrictions, do they supersede zoning? I'm just curious, if anything, I don't...
Deed, you're taking my...
I'm taking your coffee, now, hold on. That's my hand?
No, I got my hand back. Okay, so deed restrictions are, they are enforceable by the other property owners in the subdivision. City does not enforce deed restrictions. So zoning supersedes deed restrictions as far as zoning is concerned. And I'll give you an example. Let's say a deed restriction says that in your subdivision, the front yard setback is 50 feet. But the zoning says that the front yard setback is 70 feet, oh, the front yard setback is 70 feet. But if the, if the zoning said that the front yard setback was 30 feet, and your CCN, your, your deed restriction said it was 50, then the deed restriction supersedes the zoning. Does that make sense? We don't enforce deed restrictions, but a lot of our zoning districts look an awful lot like the deed restrictions that are in those neighborhoods. Because we've worked with them to come up with the rules that, that I can enforce that make sense to the community, because the whole idea is that we're making sense to the extent that we can to the community.
Ma'am, did you have another question? I think, well, I, we're all very confused about the mixed use.
It's confusing.
So my understanding is mixed use is the future umbrella.
Correct.
To cover those properties.
It's, it's saying it's not rezoning it, it's just saying that should it get rezoned,
this covers everything. But if we don't say mixed use, if we just say residential, then that umbrella doesn't cover the future.
It doesn't really apply to residential. It's, it's if it comes up, mixed use, something other than residential.
Okay, so, let me, let me give you one more example about, we, we gave a, well, about the mixed use, and it's, that's, that's not so that we can make sure that we have a variety of things, but it was more designed to enable the developer in the future to have options we can say no to. But the last thing we want is undeveloped property that could be developed for the benefit of the community and the tax base and all that stuff. If it lies fallow, it doesn't do anybody any good, and it could invite use in here that, whether it's a school district or a church, that may not be as lucrative to the city. It's, it's a, it just broadens the options for future development. It, it doesn't guarantee that those would be undertaken, but it's just an invitation to the development, correct?
Yes, sir. And I give, remember I, I talked about... And I give, remember I talked about the eight acres category from here? The future land use plan says that those acres, which now require a minimum of three, three acres per lot, if somebody wanted to change it, they would reconsider one acre lots. And I have two, have had two applications in the last three years to change that eight acres to one acre lots. And the city council said, well, P and Z said no, and then the city council said no. So even though the recommendation was if you're, if you're going to change it, it needs to look like this, but you're not obligated to change it.
You know, if they can request something that doesn't necessarily mean a future P and Z would even approve.
And you're right. And the county, what you basically said was, then they then they ever changes, the overlay guidance. If the overlay wasn't over that area and it changed, the overlay wouldn't apply, so you wouldn't have standards. And that, that becomes, that becomes changed. And we've seen that before for many years. We were actually a few years too late.
And we know people are real apprehensive, things are happening, and, and I, we, we... And we all live here too. And so, you know, just want to give you that reassurance that it's kind of for, it's for the community protection. You know, and it's been a long time coming, a lot of work, a lot... And, and this isn't unique to Oak Point. These things in, in cities all over the country. And, you know, it might be a historic district overlay, it might, you know, there's different types of overlay. We're, we're just utilizing the commercial one to help control what happens in Oak Point from that perspective.
So, one more question. So is it going to say mixed use or is it going to say residential at the corner of Martinville and Seven Twenty?
Right now, it's, it, zoning is not changing. It's going to be residential at the corner of Seven Twenty and Martinville.
So what does the overlay say?
It's only sometime in the future, if someone would ever come in and request the zoning to be changed, and if it was approved, to be changed to commercial or mixed use, then the overlay... It doesn't even come into play if everything, the houses are built there, nobody ever changes. It's, you're all good.
And current zoning, which will be the, after we're done tonight, the zoning under the properties is planned development district five, which requires a minimum lot size of two point five acre residential owned. And that's, those are the only things that are allowed there. Now, if somebody comes in, like a doctor wants to make a doctor's office on that undeveloped corner there, I think somebody might consider that. But that is exactly what happened the last time, and this council said, no, we're not doing that. We're simply...
And we would get applications, so we would be able to come through the same thing.
Anytime there's an application.
My call.
So are you changing the, the amount of land that that property can build a road down? So if they wanted somebody right now to be able to build a house on that property with this overlay in place, they would be able to build on that two acre lot?
Yes, and the two acre lot is, is a non-conforming lot because the state took a half an acre for the widening of Seven Twenty. But it was the right size when the zoning was placed on it. And so it, it now has the status, it's called non-conforming because it's no longer two and a half acres. But if somebody wanted to build a permit, I mean, build a house on that?
Yeah.
Bring me a permit.
That's the wrong way. I think you should just leave it as residential.
I think you said that.
Well, it's, it is state, it is state.
It is residential. Okay, with that, I guess if there's no other input, we'll close the public hearing at seven fourteen. And then we will move on to agenda item number fourteen. Oh, you have a question?
Thank you all for being here.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cooper, Chris has a question.
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And this is partially from my perspective, but we, we could say we're not high enough in this commercial corridor or overlay in place because development is coming. We don't have a lot of land earlier, one is coming in at this point. So we've got to get this done. Is this document permanent?
No.
Will it, did it ever be amended? Yes, that's, that's odd.
It's a living document. Most of their documents that we get are those comp plan, the comp plan. It's, they're living documents. If things change, if things evolve, we'll be back to the zoning board once we're ready.
No, no current action by a city council binds a future council to the same action.
Okay, thank you.
Now, this, this time it is a zoned district.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance amendment comprehensive zoning ordinance on approximately 394 acres of land. And then just to run a survey, W M E L survey, the country's red edition, and Oak Point CBS edition, by imposing an overlay district on said approximately 394 acres of land to be known as the FM seven twenty four zoning overlay district.
That was perfect.
Day seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, none, opposed, and赞成. Pass unanimously. Thank you, everyone. With that, we'll move on to agenda item number fifteen. The public hearing to your comments regarding, I'm just going to read the whole thing that, that, the development down on Sheehan Prairie. And we do, I'm going to have Mr. Cooper speak, and then we have a couple of people who want to speak as well. But Mr. Cooper first?
Before the public hearing?
Before that.
I would like the applicant to come up here and make their presentation so that the public understands what they're asking for.
Okay.
You got a very short memorandum to me that has the development standards, but, but I think it's important for us to have the applicants representative walk us through it. I think it's about five minutes.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
My name's Shaefer, some commissioners. My name is Brian Holland, with Corporate Development Company with offices in eighty two fourteen West Chester Drive, Dallas, Texas, seven five two two five. Thanks for your time tonight, I appreciate it. This is a multi-step process in, in this project. We've already been before the council twice. Once to get a developer agreement approved, which I assume the gentleman provided a copy of. And then a second time last week when we came in, we came before the council also for petition managation. So this is the next step in that process, and we want to talk to everybody about what we're calling agree with developments, planning, development, zoning on the town zone property.
I should be.
Thank you very much. So tonight, and I'll try, I'll try to be as, as brief as I can because I know there's a lot of folks here that want to ask questions and speak on this topic. So I'll talk a little bit about our company, show you some nearby projects, and talk a little bit about the project location and how to building what we can understand. Add some of the architectural design features, the screen plan, project elements, and then residential shapes and representative product. So it's Corporate Company, we've been in existence for about forty years. All we do is single family residential lot developments. We've done it, we're ninety-seven completed projects, seven thousand lots developed just in the Dallas Portland area. We've got twenty-two hundred projects currently, and we work across thirty different municipalities in Dallas Portland area. I've got a lot of these slides of represented projects that we've done over the years. Some of these are in close proximity to Oak Point. This is North Shore Phase one and two on El Dorado, it's currently, we just delivered the first phase of this project. It's just as you come over the bridge and you start turning, turning up towards the other end. This is the first project you come to when you're heading east. North Shore one and two were developing lots for David Leaky Homes project. And then this is the other side of Bridge in the Lake Cities area. We've been pretty active in that market since 2018. There's two existing active projects right now, Walton Ridge and Oak Ridge Park. In fact, some of the products we're doing and proposing in this project here at Oak Point, you can actually physically drive in some of these current projects. We've got some of the alley loaded cottage homes that we're talking about in this package. So if you take some time and look at these projects, if you want to head over and drive these up, I'd recommend that. This is one, I know. Oak Ridge Park, this is the, this is one of, it's kind of a blow up of some of the, of that project you saw previously. This one's south of Lake Sheehan Drive. It's got, it's a P and Z for 310 lots and includes 170 cottage lots, very similar to the same size lots we're doing, or proposing during this project, the thirty by ninety-eight, and then patio, patio lots, skiddies, and, and some traditional lots which we've dealt with sixty. So exactly the same lot makeup and makeup on that, this project, and currently we're proposing tonight. Another one in current is Walton Ridge. This has got, this would be a good one to explore also. It's got the muse concept, so it's got rear three alley load products. It faces onto where they call them muse, which is a common green space between, so your front doors on some of these houses actually front like a fifty foot green space. And then they back up to a house, a garage off the alley. These are jobs, I'll just run through these real quick. Breezy Hills, those are two long term projects we've done over probably years in Rockwall, both near a thousand lots, four hundred acres each. And then Annaphe Square, we've developed over two thousand lots in the, in the Anna market. Let me slide through here because we got a few representative photos. I wanted, this is just a slide showing you some of our representative hardscape features that we do. We pride ourselves on, on doing long lasting, sustainable communities that have nice entry features, landscaped amenities throughout, and this project would be no different than what we've done in the past. And we'll get to the subject property. I think everybody in the screen probably knows what we're talking about. This is the town zone tract. It's about sixty, about sixty-five acres east of FM seven twenty on Sheehan Prairie Drive. About eighteen point five acres of property is currently located within the city limits. And, but a majority of it, about forty-seven, forty-six point four acres is currently located in the E T J. The project, this is a site plan, the project, we're proposing a total of 376 total lots. Again, it's a mixture, this is a mixture of traditional patio and cottage lots. And if you look at the type of diagram, the layout, we, we load the larger fifty and sixty foot lots on the front and towards our neighbors to the west. And then we transition into a higher, more dense product as we get closer to the industrial site that you're familiar with, and also to the south where we're facing older product stock that we need to have price sensitivity next to. The existing land use designation is the eighteen point five acres in the city, which we're asking to rezone. It's currently zoned already five. The forty-six point four acres is in the E T J. We're voluntarily offering to annex that use of the city to give the city control over that property in exchange for the zoning we're asking for tonight. Again, as I mentioned at, at the start, we did have a DA, a developer agreement approved already by the city council that outlines this contest, concept plan is attached to that developer agreement. It was approved as part of that developer agreement. And also, we voluntarily patched development regulations to that developer agreement as well, which is something that the state legislature, you know, and all the business wisdom kind of regulated down the city's control. And so by us voluntarily annexing this into the city and entering to that developer agreement, then that gives you the control and the architectural enhancements to make it a high quality project. Some of those enhancements that this are just listed here, eighty percent overall masonry on all, all homes, seventy-five percent masonry on each facade, dormers, patios, porches, stews, balconies. If the public wants a copy of that developer agreement, they'd like to probably provide, provide that to you. Again, I just mentioned these briefly, but this is basically the same slide. Talks about a little more detail about some of the additional, some of the details on those. Balconies, minimum twenty-five square feet, patio is a minimum twenty-five square feet. So these are all just various things that, that we've agreed to in the developer agreement that, that can't be regulated without the developer and the city coming together and agreeing to a developer agreement of that nature. And when I talk about the, the muse concept, the muse lots, this, this is an actual picture of what that would look like. So you have, these are the cottage lots where you have rear load, alley product. And so you get a really clean front facade, you, you don't have garages, you know, snub nosed garages facing the street. And, and a lot of them, sometimes those houses face onto a green belt. So that's where a nice community feel, people can go out and enjoy that common area between them. Just talks a little bit about the screening we're planning to do along Sheehan Prairie. It would be a six foot masonry screening wall with masonry columns, fifty foot off on center. So a high quality, you know, masonry screening wall you would see on a high residential community. Eight foot board on board fence is what you see in, in, in red there. That basically kind of blocks our view of the industrial to the east and then to the, into the older homes to the south. And then we have a six foot board on board fence on the west side. Now, where that fence actually backs up to our neighbors to the west, we will coordinate and work with those neighbors if they want a replacement of their fence. We'll do that at no cost to them. If they don't, if that, then, then we'll just share that fence that's already on the property. All right, so a little bit about the project elements. We've spoken a little bit about it tonight, but we'll be providing an interconnected trail with seating sidewalks along the streets, provide walkability, you know, and access throughout the project. We've got enhanced entry features, where you see number one there, monitation with a fountain, you know, the fountain with a pond and pool at that location. But from a private amenity center, number two at that location. So this will be, you know, again, another, a high end feel, high end community as you drive in. And then we're, we've worked with the city to identify tree preservation areas. We can maintain the, about six acres, I think of open space and tree area, primarily where you see number three and number four there and some of those green spaces. That's just an example of kind of a picture of what that pond represented photo, what that might look like. In fact, Quail Hall is one of our projects over in Rockwall that we're developing today. And so that's an existing facility to see there. And just some representative photos of what the amenities that are about to buy. And again, just talking about, yeah, trying to preserve the existing trees, natural open spaces, ponds, water, trees, you know, hiking, biking trails, those are all things that folks are looking for on a consumer standpoint today. And then this project, I, you know, it gets quite a bit of water runoff onto it from our, our neighbors to the north and, and east and west. We're going to have to pick that up and carry it through to Lake Lewisville. We're working on the south side. We got easements already in place to be able to capture that and get it out of the project and get it into Lake Lewisville. Now, this is probably one of the big slides, I think most people are probably interested in. I know Sheehan Prairie carries quite a bit of traffic. We are required, and, and we've written into our developer agreement language requiring us to widen that intersection or that street, shape treatment, and so I'll just read it directly out of the developer agreement. The developer agrees to construct or fund the construction of improvements to Sheehan Prairie Road for the Wildridge Boulevard transition extending from Wildridge Boulevard approximately eight hundred and ninety linear feet southeast, which improvements will consist of widening the existing two lane collector to a four lane minor archery at the Wildridge Boulevard intersection, with the final section including the widening resulting in a fifty-six foot pavement width back to back of fur. So, so there's a, we, and it also requires us to do a TIA at the time of construct, of engineering, and anything that else that's required of that TIA, TIA will also be required to make improvements to the roadway system around this. And then the other, some of the other comments we heard last week where it was the concern about access into Woodbridge Estates and not, not allowing access in Woodbridge Estates. And we've agreed to that as well. So where do you see, so our, our only access ingress and egress of the project from a consumer standpoint or from a homeowner's standpoint is on, will be number one and two on the Sheehan Prairie Road. Where you see the stars there, we are stubbing out or tying into the existing facilities, existing streets within Woodbridge Estates, but we've agreed to make those restricted access points. So we'll put, during the construction timeframe, we'll actually install text dot style guardrails which you see in the lower right hand picture. And then, once the project, once we get all the paving done, get the infrastructure completed, we'll come in and actually put permanent gates across that that are only accessible by EMS, emergency services through a Knox box system, yeah, so. Yeah, so, um, there was-
Monetka already has this, just so you know.
Okay, well, do we want to do-
A wall behind it.
Okay, yeah. Um, and then, uh, there was concern that those are private gates and that, uh, let's say someday in the future when we're gone and the HOA takes over and people want to access that, um, that the HOA will just out, will just open those. What we're saying is we're putting that, we'll put that in our, in our, in our D A, correct? As we talked about last week with council.
And our homeowners association.
And our homeowners association as well, that, uh, those will never be opened by the HOA or by the residents of, of our community. And so, um, a future council or a future, that, that could be up to their prerogative, but it's, it won't be, um, by the private, uh, positions ourselves. And this is, uh, kind of gives you some, uh, ideas of the photos of the pictures of, of the homes we're going to be doing. This is the cottage product, which I was telling you is a rear-entry, uh, product on, on the, of the muse. And so you see it's a nice masonry product, beautiful, uh, front entry feature. Uh, they don't have any garages facing the streets. And so it gives you a really nice street get. Talks a little bit about the square footage size. And so the, these homes will be anywhere from 1,600 to 2,400 square feet. Uh, we're projecting a price point of about 370 on the low end to $450,000 on the upper end. And so, uh, which fits, you know, from a market standpoint in, you know, in with the surrounding properties. This, uh, moving on down up to the patio homes, which I said was on the, the 50-foot product, these will be between 2,000 and 3,000 square feet. Variance between, you know, of all sizes in between product, the pricing anticipated between the 470s and the 620s. And last is the larger 60-foot home, uh, product. Uh, these are going to be 2,200 square feet to 3,200 square feet, uh, 520,000 square feet for the 720. I'm happy to answer any questions right ahead.
What was the, what was the, on like 33 slides back, the first one or-
That one?
Type C, what was the minimum square feet?
1,600 square feet.
Okay, so, in the, uh, do we ask, can we ask 10 questions now or do, we are not in public hearing yet or?
You can ask anything you want, anytime you want.
Both of you, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just, uh, in the, the D A, uh, the developer agreement, you said it will be amended to put the restrictions about the gates in, right?
Actually, I've, I've got-
Has it already been done?
I've actually made it amended to the zoning ordinance that does that.
Okay, okay. So, and in the, I've just had a couple of questions on the developer agreement. I know it's already been approved, but I did have a couple of questions. I just want to make sure it was conscious decisions and maybe just not missed. Uh, one of the things is the maximum height that's shown is 2.5 stories and 36 feet. But our ordinance that's in place in the city that when we've dealt with things before, maximum height of anything is 35 feet. So I was just curious how the 36 got in there. Was that because you specifically require that and then grew to it or?
I think some of these cottage product have a steeper pitch roof on them and therefore we asked for, I think, a little slightly. Just because of the product that we're building, ours was slightly different.
Because everything else has had to have special use permits and all that done, approved.
This was, this was part of the administrative deal for the annexation to occur.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, like I said, a conscious decision and not just, that it just got through the plan. And then it does list some minimum dwelling area, dwelling areas in here. And it's got it down to 1250 square feet, so, but I didn't see that on your presentation.
But that's the minimum. We're projecting that these homes will start at 1,600, but-
But you've got two other categories, one's 1250 and one's 50 now.
Yeah, that's the, the absolute minimum we could build, that's correct.
And those are the standards that are in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
What, the, what's in the D A?
Yes.
Okay, but I'm just saying that wasn't consistent with what I saw.
Yeah, we're projecting the dollar homes will be larger than that, but that's a minimum, yeah.
Okay, that was my question, I had it.
That's a for sure, that's a yes, like for sure.
Well, wait, the public can, you can ask at the public hearing.
Um, are there any other questions before we open the public hearing? You guys have any questions?
Open her up.
Okay, with that, I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:34 P M. And I do have a couple of people who requested to speak and I got just on here. So with that, um, Bennett and McCall?
McCall Bennett.
I was for sure. I knew whichever way I said it, it was going to be the whole one.
Okay.
I should've said call.
I think you should bring your kids up there.
Are you?
Oh, no, yeah. I remind you, we have three minutes.
Okay. Um, good evening, my name is McCall Bennett. My family and I built our homes here in Woodbridge Estates. And we've been there for the past seven and a half years. We love living in Oak Point, we are not originally from Texas and love it. And we would like to continue to stay here and love where we live. And I'm here tonight because I oppose the current plans. Um, I live on Monetka, which is right down the street from this new development. There's lots of reasons that I oppose this, but due to time constraints, I'll just speak about four of them. Uh, I know that Oak Point has been under water restrictions and we end up with only being able to water once a week. I'm wondering how that's going to work if you can have all these new homes there with all of our water. I'm concerned about the overcrowded density. And while I would love for all that space just to remain and be beautiful built, I realize that's not a realistic option. So at the very least, I would request that it becomes larger lots, um, like we have in Woodbridge Estates or in Wildridge. And earlier tonight you had made a comment about that first plot of land. And you had said that it was good that the land was substantial size. And I would like to see land of substantial size stay in Oak Point. Uh, the next is in addition to the overcrowded buildings, Oak Point Elementary will also become overcrowded. For those who don't know, Oak Point Elementary is currently overcrowded. We have 1,070 children there. And I looked up and based off Texas Education Administration, they shared a profile of the average enrollment in Texas schools. And the average high school is 1,039 kids. We have more kids than most high school, high schools have. And I know that Lakewood Village is opening, but we are already projected with the kids they're taking to be at capacity for overcrowded next year. Um, and I know that if you look Hilltown is meant to go, but because of dual language, they will be staying. So it seems like we'll have less kids and we still won't. But if we now end up with all these more new homes and new families, Oak Point will be right back to where we were before. And I think that our kids deserve more in this community than overcrowded classrooms. I appreciate seeing that they are going to get off my street. And I just now question, how do we make that happen as a city to make sure that stays that way and that someone doesn't- amend some C C R or do something in the new HOA? And, um, I guess lastly, I just would ask each of you to stop and think, if you live in the neighborhood next to this development, would you be happy with what is happening? Would you be excited about it? And if the answer is no, then I ask that you make whatever change is possible to make this more like Oak Point and keep it more country, more land, more green space. I wonder where all those children are going to play in that neighborhood because there is like zero green. And I would hope that you take all this into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, and then Amber Taylor?
Good evening, my name is Amber Taylor. I, my family and I have lived in Woodbridge Estates for the last 12 years.
Did you give us your address?
Oh, 101 Glenview Drive.
We just have to have it on.
Not a problem. Um, all of my children have attended all of the elementary schools around, uh, at Oak Point Elementary. We also have one currently at Walker Middle School and one at Little Elm High School. I appreciate the opportunity to share my concerns about the proposed subdivision project that aims to place a large number of small homes on very small lot sizes on a very limited piece of land. We've heard from several in our neighborhood over the last few months about this. Um, and the effects that this project would have on our community for a homeowner's perspective. But I have worked as a realtor for the North Texas area for the last nine years. And tonight, I would like to provide a unique perspective from a real estate and community health point of view. As to why this type of development is not right for our area. While development is a part of a growing community, this kind of high-density housing, particularly when it involves lower cost or, well, the cost actually shocked me as I'm watching, looking at this. I honestly don't know how we're going to sell those with the small backyards and zero lot line, but we'll get to that later. Um, this can lower the value of, um, near single-family homes anywhere from 5 to 12% that are surrounding this. The proposal would also introduce a very different life, uh, different style of housing. The high number of homes with minimal setbacks and limited grid space, zero lot lines will affect our privacy, noise levels, and our key, our Oak Point community, country, community feel. All, um, all of which reduce neighborhood appeal and ultimately reduce home values to the surrounding communities. High-density housing also doesn't suit our neighborhood infrastructure or surrounding communities. Packing 375 homes into a tight area will inevitably lead to an increase, uh, increase in traffic congestion, which not only on Shagrin Prairie would be a problem, but on 720, an absolute minor. Um, this isn't just an inconvenience. One of the biggest concerns for homeowners in the North Texas area is their commute. Our roads were not designed for the added strain this housing development will cause. It will affect commute times. Commute times directly affect home desirability. We've, we've seen this with homeless housing developments off of 380 west of the tollway. We do not want this happening here. Lastly, our school quality has a direct impact on our home values. I'm speaking directly about our local elementary school, Oak Point Elementary. And already, as we've heard, it's overcapacity even with the new elementary school being built. The future influx of families this project could bring anywhere from 300 to 900 kids. Again, would push enrollment beyond safe and effective levels. Overcrowded schools can lead to school rank dropping. A single drop in a school's ranking can decrease the nearby home values by 6 to 10%. Families prioritize education. And if our schools are seen as overcrowded and/or declining, buyers will look elsewhere. I ask that this council prioritize long-term neighborhood stability over short-term development gains. Smart growth respects the character and capacity of existing communities here in Oak Point. Let's work together to keep ours strong. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak who didn't submit a form? Can I have a question?
The lady in the back.
I will, I will.
Right, so Valerie Watson, 5005 Mar. Um, my first question to you, to all of you on this council, do any of you actually live on the east side of 720? In the Woodbridge or the Wildridge subdivision? Okay, so her question again was very valid. If you actually live in that neighborhood and had to deal with this extra influx, um, the restraints on the water flow. You mentioned water flow going into, because of how they're going to mitigate that water flow. If you see the creek beds that come through Woodbridge, none of that has ever been done. And maybe the most, the best developer in the neighborhood, we had dowdled and hybrid development. And we know how that got us in this area as well. The lack of planning, the water flow studies that weren't done, the landscape fabric and rebar that are left on our creek beds, they're still there today, 20 years later. Mustang water is overburdened already. Um, as we mentioned, one watering day a week, how are we going to afford all of this with those homes? Our electrical grid in Woodbridge, we have brownouts on a regular basis. 30 seconds here, five minutes there, constantly pulling out. Um, if you remember in the deep freeze, when all that happened, our neighborhood was the only neighborhood that was out for over a week. And we didn't have that in there either. So we're also looking at the internet in there. We mentioned the gates, that you're going to put gates in there, gates can be unlocked. So we want something a little bit more permanent than just a gate that can be moved. Um, maybe when you're looking at maybe doing a little bit of redevelopment on there or on the flat, just close it off. Put a, make that one lot in the corner bigger or just block it off. We don't want access in here on the neighborhood at all, if at all possible. We would appreciate that. Um, we, again, we know development's coming. We're happy to have some homes back there as opposed to a business or some other industrial-type product in there. So the homes are great. Some of the layouts of those homes are really pretty. Townhomes don't fit, those townhomes with alleys and no green space. He's, you know, it should, you have like a little wide space to go play out in front of your townhome. I've lived in townhomes before. People don't ever use them, they don't go out there. And that they can't have dogs and cats, they can't have, you know, enjoyable areas for their children to play. There's no safe fenced backyard where a child can play. And you look at all of the crimes that started coming up in our area. We've had the shooting that was over on Glenview where a bullet went through someone's front door in their house. Um, almost to a 14-year-old child that's sleeping on the sofa. We've got the issues coming up from Hilltown with all of that traffic. We have several Hilltown people that come up through those creek beds and they come into our pool area and break and, or vandalize our pool area. So we're concerned about the quality of people who, and how many rentals you might have in that neighborhood as well. So we have a lot of issues. We've, and I'm on the HOA board, I've been the president, I'm now secretary because we just had elections. Um, I gave up the president title because that's a lot of work. But we're, we're just concerned. We haven't had any communication from the city. Y'all post up on the website, but if someone's not actively watching every single day, what's coming? How we can be, uh, be a partner in that? How we can maybe do some ideas or get some feedback from y'all like, hey, this is coming in. We'd like to work with your neighborhood, get y'all to buy into it. Because we do want a neighborhood back there, we don't want other types of development. But let's make it to where it's actually more beneficial and it's not just a money grab. Where we're going to give any money from the city to the developer, so. And we're not just, oh, I'm sorry, we had a bad one for our neighborhood, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Deborah?
Can I ask a question?
Um, sure.
So 46 acres are in the E T J.
Yes.
We have no control of it.
That's like 52 acres.
52 acres, so we have no control, they're going to want.
That's correct.
So this gives us control.
But five, because the developer requests an annexation, the developers have to request that, we can't just-
Yeah, so all I'm saying is, this development could happen no matter what, 52 acres. And we have no control or no say. It'll happen without, because that's what I'm hearing. It could happen. And then the other question I have is with Texas having a dictating affordable housing, does this help us on some of what we know potentially coming up from Texas on affordable housing?
Probably not.
Okay, just curious. Okay, you answered my question.
Are there any other people who wish to speak?
Sure, why not?
Go for it.
Jerry Bailey, 633, Reeding Drive. Um, I will echo pretty much what everything said, the concerns without, with the vast, with the, I guess, the more people in the city. So again, with the elementary school, so yes, we're getting really now, finally students are getting out of those outpost buildings. This was bringing outpost buildings right back and put those up. Back to 375 homes, that's probably going to add up on average 750 meters. Each house probably has at least two meters, that's 750 people going down Shagrin Prairie, past that elementary school, at that light, down 720. Mike mentioned earlier, 720 is already the nightmare, he sees where it's going in the future. Are we going to shoot ourselves in the foot, keep making it worse ourselves? Also mentioned several times, it keeps, keeps happening on the other side of 720, which we've seen previously and even earlier. The developments on this side of 720, we want to keep that large lots, four acres, two acres. Over there, let's just pile them on top of each other. We don't care. We don't care about the traffic over there. This country place, a country place. People, the residents here, live here for a country place. They moved here for a country place. But now we're opening all these shopping centers that are probably going to remain empty. They're just piling on top of each other. I take my boys to baseball practice, I sit on 720 for 20 minutes. It's just not a country place. Sorry, we're going public speaking. Um, it's just not why we moved here, it's not why we live here, it's already going. So I mentioned earlier, having McDonald's in their backyard, we don't want to see that. It's just going the wrong direction. I don't know why we're helping it, I don't know why parts of Oak Point, large lots, four-acre lots. And then we're going to pile 376 lots into a 52-acre area. Doesn't make sense. That's not why we live here. I've heard on the message boards, part of the reason is tax revenue. Residents, we don't care about the tax revenue. We don't, we don't need pickleball courts, we don't need all this. I've heard rooftops so we can get a grocery store. I don't care about a grocery store. The Kroger, Walmart? Yeah, they're, they're close enough. We, we don't need a grocery store in Oak Point. We don't need pickleball courts, we don't need tax revenue, we don't need all this. It's a country place, we moved here to get away, front of everybody, away from the traffic, away from it. We're just making it worse, we're shooting ourselves in the foot, just keep making it worse. So if you're going for the residents, if you're supposed to speak for the residents, please speak for the residents. We don't want more people, we don't want more residents, we don't want more traffic. We want to come, plug gates, need to shut, so that's just my piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If not, we will close the public hearing at 7:50. And, yeah, is there any other questions from Mr. Kroger or anyone? I do wanna reiterate again, just in case you didn't hear, personally, I understand the concern about the higher density and that sort of thing, but again, similar to the overlife, we're trying to control what we can control. And in this particular situation, I think we have, what my understanding is, I was at a council meeting, that we have a really good developer who's proposing this, and they're trying to take some steps to help alleviate some of the existing problems, but the big.
What problems, what problems is this alleviating? Am I allowed to ask?
No.
Do you want to answer anyway?
Well, one of the issues is with drainage. It's my understanding, the developer and Mr. Kroger can speak to this too, has already purchased some lots along in Hilltown that's gonna help direct some of the water, but it's something they have to do that they didn't have to do. The other thing is, they didn't have to request annexation. And the big factor with that is, as Deborah was mentioning, the fact that the vast majority of the acreage is in the ETJ, we have no say over that. Just like anything that's in Denton County only or in ETJ, like the Mogawang Park that's just north of us, that could go in there. Apartment complexes could go in. We don't control anything that's not within the city limits. So by them requesting to be annexed into the city, that gives us a say. And it gives Mr. Kroger the authority to work with them and make it the best that we can make it. I understand everyone's concerns, but I just wanna make sure everyone realizes that we are bound by the state law and what we have a say over and what we don't. And if it's in the ETJ, we can look at Platts, but we can't control anything. So.
I don't think we need any use for that. That was good.
Can I ask the developer a question? I don't know how all this works, I apologize.
There's no word.
I mean, are these the kind of questions we should have been asking to the developer in expressing instead of here? Because I just feel like I'm hearing that it doesn't actually matter anything that I've just said. And if I would have gone to the developer and said, these are my concerns, would you do something different?
Well. Give us a chance.
Yeah. Well.
Yeah, so we, at this point in time, we will ask a number of questions based upon the feedback we've heard.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know. I was like, are you voting right now? I just don't know. I'm sorry.
We have questions.
I have some questions.
Jerry, did you have a question?
I did have a question.
Well, let me just say one more thing, and Dave brought this up. One thing for everyone to understand, and Mr. Kroger can speak to this too, when the developer requests annexation, when they come forward and ask for that, that requires a discussion and a negotiation between the city and the developer. And that part's been worked out because they have a developer agreement in place. And those, as much like the road improvements and those kinds of things were the known issues that the city was aware of, and council and city manager, Mr. Kroger, everyone worked with the developer to try to address those things. And just to be clear, the role that we have tonight is just dealing with the annexation. No, it's not dealing with annexation. That part's already been approved, or it's gonna be.
At council.
At council.
Council approves annexation.
Okay.
And they also approve zoning upon a recommendation from the commission.
And the zoning that we're looking at is that PD, that's the developer agreement that's been negotiated and worked out with the developer and the city already, March. But we do have some other questions.
Before we go to the other questions, Chairperson, let me say that we've had open meetings, several of them, where members from what Woodridge have been here.
Two.
Yes, two, that I know of. But Jack has been here almost every meeting.
First, two meetings.
Well, no, almost every meeting. Jack Brown has.
Yeah, he goes hard enough.
But he's a Woodridge person, so. But I'd like to just answer this young lady's question. I don't think that Skorberg, who is the developer in this case, tried to hide the ball. And we've been working on this for a year. And a lot of public interaction, including the last meeting where the developer, where we agreed whether we were gonna provide his services and those kinds of things. But let me go back and say that had you talked to the developer, he's right here, it may have or may not have made a difference. But the one thing that has happened, at least in the discussions with Jack Brown, is they agreed to put up gates that the HRA is gonna be responsible for, and I've made it a condition in the zoning ordinance. And that they will have NOx locks, which are not open to anybody but emergency services. And the DHOA will maintain those in perpetuity. So while you may not have talked to the developer directly, the public hearing is, which is come and gone, and I thought you did a good job, by the way. The fact that that has come and gone puts the ball back in the commission's court. Their job is to listen to what y'all said, talk among themselves, and make a recommendation to the city council. I expect them to do that here in, over the next little bit. The city council is going to consider what their recommendation is on the 21st of this month. And there will be public hearings there as well. So you're all invited to be there for that.
And the city council doesn't necessarily have to follow any recommendation that you make, they have their own discretion.
Yes, the city council.
We're recommending.
For Platts, they're the final authority, but for zoning cases, they're a recommending body. And that's important. It's part of the process that makes sure that the public, the people who live here, have the opportunity to voice their concerns at more than just the appointed level. Because the council's an elected body, but the legislative body. And with that, I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Perfect.
Yeah, so maybe I'll start, if there's a few questions. So Michael, we've had questions like this come up before, like Mustang water and getting approval from Mustang, that they agree that they'll be able to support additional development in the community. And also from the school district, the developer getting letters from the school district as well. Is this an opportunity maybe to outline that process and where we're at in that process?
In this case, the developer in this case has been working with Mustang for the last almost a year now. They've agreed to install a new water tower in an advantageous place for the city and for Mustang to provide water to this subdivision and additional opportunities for water to Woodridge because of the location of the tower. They are acquiring the land for the tower on Sheahan Prairie, up closer to the CBS. That's one of the places.
With Mount Durk.
I don't know about Mount Durk, but there. But they also have five acres someplace else that would be, they're looking for something that's higher, higher elevation, so that gravity works better. So that's part of the deal. We are, not we, but the developer is obligated to tell all the utilities, all the school districts that may be affected by this development about what they're doing, they have to provide evidence that they've done it, not today, but prior to submission of their final plat. And the final, in processes like this, assume that the zoning is approved through the city council this month, they're gonna apply for a preliminary plat. It has how the layout looks, that concept plan that you saw. The plat, it'll be the streets, the drainage, all of those kinds of things will be submitted concurrently. The engineering will be reviewed, the plat document will be evaluated, and a recommendation to the commission will be made by the staff about approval. Once the preliminary plat's approved by the commission, then the applicant has a year to finalize their engineering and submit their final plat, along with the proof that they have notified the post office, the school district, the GIS, 911 coordinator, all of the utilities, and that would be Brazos and TXU or Encore, whoever, the water supply district, because they know that they're involved because they're supplying the water. All of that process has to occur prior to the consideration of the final plat, which is, they're the final arbiter on Platts.
That's not.
That goes after this is done, the zoning is approved, and after the preliminary plat is approved. I think we'll see staking, but I don't think we're gonna see any work out there until the preliminary plat's approved.
And then maybe this next question is for Brian. You heard some of the feedback, everything, you've already presented a few things around the road construction and dampening devices, noise dampening. But given 375 homes, is there anything you would consider, be able to take back before the final plat or?
Well, what I would say is that we've negotiated the road improvements along Sheahan Prairie Road already, we've, you know, we've pretty widened and improved almost 890 meters from that, which is considerable, considerable impact on the budget, but it also, it will be a considerable impact on our road. It'll make a tremendous difference there, especially on where the school is and stuff, from a stacking standpoint. And where it goes from, what, four lanes down to two, and those four lanes almost veer right into the two lanes, it's a bad situation right now. We're gonna make it better. So yes, we are adding more traffic to it, but we are also agreeing to a traffic impact analysis. If there's more kinds out of that, a traffic impact analysis, we will have to do that as well. I don't anticipate a whole lot more, there might be an actual DSA lane that may come out of that study. There won't be any improvements to 720, but just, I'm just telling you, I just know that this project alone has not had the impact, 720 is already, that location is already overlooked. That's gonna be, I believe 720 is a tech stop road, if I'm not incorrect. It will have warrants and eventually, tech stops are gonna look at that and decide whether they're gonna do some improvements there or not based on their criteria. But what we're doing won't impact that.
Mr. Kroger, just for clarification, Martop, we talked about the line earlier, the one at 720 in Martop, but it's kind of in process. What's the status of Martop improvement going east?
Do you know?
I.
Because that's gonna help.
I sort of, yeah, I sort of know, but I don't know. I don't know the perfect. And we've gotten the right-of-way from Ashler for the bulk of Martop to the east from the intersection, all the way over to Brazos, like, substation. There's some right-of-way on the north side, which I intend to get from an applicant that's currently asking to come into the city off the north side. And I'm gonna get some improvements from Ashler for a portion of Martop over to the existing end of Martop in Prairie Hills, in Prairie Ridge.
So from a, from a traffic standpoint, that will help a little from Wildridge, getting able to access that when that happens. And then there are another elementary school also going, is that the Long School District as well? Up in just, Wildridge?
That's true. The new school by Wildridge is gonna be denting, counting, highest.
It's denting, testing.
There's a new one going off of Del Dorado, next to our, closer to our north side.
That's south.
That's Lake, Lake West. Yeah, that's where everyone's waiting on that.
Every district, I think a lot, that's damage from.
But probably this whole district is gonna happen. That's all this.
Brian, would you mind addressing, and I think you said it, the sidewalk along the Sheahan Prairie area where you're going to be making business, is there, that sidewalk's going towards the school lines? I assume there's a sidewalk there.
Yeah, believe me, she has heard me if I'm wrong, is that correct?
You just, you guys just built a sidewalk behind Woodridge to, it's right here. This is where that, like, about halfway up, I don't know, where that little X is. It's hard to see, but they made a sidewalk behind our, what's that, Woodridge Drive, so that the kids from the neighborhood don't have to go to 720, and it keeps the parents from, I'm sorry, not going to turn that Sheahan Prairie, so that the kids can go behind the houses.
Where they're going to the fields.
Well, that's, yeah, for that field.
But our intent is to build, yeah, build a sidewalk all along City and Prairie there, you know, outside of our, along the property.
And I, as I was, oh, there's not a sidewalk across that street today.
No. But there is a sidewalk on the other side of Sheahan Prairie.
Oh, there.
I'm on the, I'm on the side.
I know, Wildridge.
Average side there is. Yeah, you can see it up there. I walked down.
And I will tell y'all, it gets used a lot.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions for either Michael?
Transportation, we've been more talking about what you're looking at there on Sheahan Prairie. But, you know, when you look at the overall density and the traffic, and 720 is bigger than all of us. But the intersection there, is there anything that needs to be looked at there? Because it's a mess digging in and out of 720, and I'm just looking at the additional loading.
Yes.
Is there something?
Okay, so they're required to submit a TIA traffic impact assessment that would show any improvements that would be necessary as a result of their development. They have to give that to me before the final plat's approved. So we'll review that.
It's not part of the consideration, is it?
Not part of your consideration, but it is part of the DA that we already, sorry.
That's our last.
That's correct.
There was in that same area, and I was reading the improvements to Sheahan Prairie. Further along, it says that we must, we are required to do a TIA, and we have to adhere to whatever that TIA says, improvements need to be done on the surrounding, you know, in back on the surrounding.
And Keith, I agree with you, that intersection of Sheahan Prairie and 720 is not good.
I have a question for you. I'm kinda listening to what the residents are saying, and I'm hearing right, you guys are gonna build a water tower to alleviate the.
Yeah, we're not gonna build a water tower, our responsibility is to give, get the Mustang utility enough land to build a water tower. It's in their capital improvement program. But part of our requirement, we're giving the water analysis, they knew they needed a water tower in this area, in this location, to boost their, to boost power, their water supply. So we either have to give them, how many acres should, on our?
Three maximum.
Like three acres on our property, or find them a suitable location, which we're, we're in the process of, either, doing either of those right now.
And what about you, I hear the, you know, the overcrowding of the schools?
We've talked to the superintendent, we've talked to the school district, and they didn't share any concerns with us. Now, I understand, if you have people in those schools, you can have a lot of, wow, we're everything. I have children in school right here, and I think our school is a real kind of two. And talking with the superintendent, that's their job to regulate growth, it's their job to build schools, to accommodate growth. They're aware of this project, they told us they're building a new school down on Del Dorado, that they're adjusting some of these residents and some of the houses to that location, and that would free up, you know, a lot of the things that they need to serve us.
The developer, it looks nice, I like it, I'm not too fond of the cottage homes.
One thing I would point out is that the city, your city and the city council and Mike and the city manager at the time, we came in with actually a denser plan than what we're looking at today.
Oh.
Yeah, that's true.
And so they did a good job to say, okay, well, let's look at your neighbors to the west, look at your neighbors to the north, east, let's try to put some compatible housing stock in and around that. I think from a property value standpoint, I heard that being a comment, I don't think that would be a concern, but we're projecting more of these houses in there. We're gonna exceed, I haven't, but we'll exceed a majority of the values around us. Even those cottage homes, starting where they are, they're gonna be at or on par with the majority of the houses to the west, and the majority of the houses to the east of us is part of that. So it's just a different type of product. When you're looking at. When you're looking at planning, you do have to have a transition to less attractive things around you. I mean, we just got to be frank. You know, the larger homes, the most more expensive homes are not going to be located next to the industrial facility. So you can either put a parking complex there, you can put trailer parks there, or you can try to come up with a creative product that looks great, is 80% nationally, doesn't have a garage that's sticking out on the front. You can get a DRHorn Express product, and I love DRHorn, they're one of our clients. But they can put some damp and dirty product on the ground. That's not what this is. Go to forens, drive these subdivisions I told you about. Then you pack it, I would highly encourage you to go look at it. You're going to be impressed with the products on the ground. There are no townhomes, I heard that comment today as well. This is all de-capped housing. Yes, they're small lots, but they have fences, they have areas where kids can play. We've got the muses between these cottage lots. We're providing visitor parking, I mean, an amenity center, you know, a pond on the front edge. It's going to look amazing. It's going to be a really nice, high-quality community that's going to be proud of. Are there going to be some painful issues because of the traffic and things? Yes, I understand that. That's part of the growth, you know, but we think that this fits with this surrounding community. I think in the long run, you guys will be proud of this again.
Got another question for you. I'm sure you've done a lot of business analysis on this, and you have other properties that you've shown up there. And from what I heard, it appears that they are a high-end type of approach. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any who purchase these types of homes? But when I look at zero lot lines, it's not always.
Your families will predominantly gravitate towards the 15 and 16 foot lines. And then your cottage lots will be, you'll get a lot of seniors, you'll get a lot of empty nesters, you'll get a lot of first, young professionals that don't, you know, don't have kids. So yeah, those are geared more towards folks that aren't looking for the actual lifestyle of, or maintaining a backyard, you know, they want to block it and leave it. And I don't know if our HOA, they get to maintain all of that or not. Sometimes in these communities, depending on the cost of HOA dues, we'll actually have the HOA main, know all the graphics as well. So yeah, the demographic on the cottage, you'll have a very demographic.
But do you have demographics that can show? I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, we did, we did six years. I don't have that much, might expose it today. But yeah, we can present that, some of that, if it counts.
Any other questions? Okay. I think what's the force here, basically, what we're going to recommend approval of the negotiated planned development.
Has she called item 16?
Do you have a motion? Do they want to have a motion?
I'm going to care if you would wait just a second.
Okay.
I had added some language to the end of the zoning.
Item 16?
Yes. And it has to do with, I'm not sure what that. It has to do with the gates and the HOA management and operations. Bear with me for a second. Okay, and I want to read this into the record. This is in addition to the development standards. Ready? And I'll give this to you. This is an additional requirement. There shall be no vehicular traffic allowed with the exception of emergency vehicles from the subject property to the west on any existing street connecting to the Woodridge subdivision. The developer shall install gates with Knox locks to provide emergency access only from the Woodridge subdivision side to the subject property. Continuing maintenance shall be required by the HOA.
What HOA?
One of the standards is when they submit their final plat requirement, they have to submit their HOA covenants for review and approval. That goes along then, the plat gets approved here, those covenants go on to the city council for qualifications, and then they're filed at the county clerk and recorder's office.
So what does it have to say?
You'll get a notice of what those requirements are.
She got, I think she got. Woodridge has not.
It's not your HOA.
No, it's the new. It's the new HOA putting the requirement for the maintenance and operation of those gates on them, not on Woodridge.
But Mike said, is it any part of your zoning, then you can enforce it as the city?
Right, and the reason I'm putting it in this zoning ordinance is, is zoning violation of the zoning ordinance is punishable in a court of law by $2,000 a day for every day that the infraction occurs. And by putting it in the zoning ordinance, not the development agreement, the zoning ordinance, it becomes the law, and I can enforce that. Which is what I've been hearing y'all say about the impact of this proposed development on your existing subdivision. I'm trying to minimize that. But I still need to be able to provide emergency access. Because when you take a look at the distance from Sheahan Prairie to the southernmost part of the new subdivision, that's a long way.
And it's not unusual, I'll just make a comment, it's not unusual for developments, especially if you're around like the lake where you have little peninsulas and stuff. Things can happen. I mean, even where we live, creek floods, and we're in a gated community. We have a gate in the back, but that's only one way in and one way out. And when the creek flooded out the road, we had to open up the emergency gate so everyone who lives on that peninsula has a way to get out. So that's what this will serve as. So there is, it's not, there is precedent for this. And it's not something that will happen except in an emergency situation.
It's only designed for emergency services. And the developer's going to put up, in addition to what's already there, barricades to keep during construction, any of the construction traffic from ending up in the Woodridge subdivision. We're really, we being the city, are trying to protect it to the extent that we can, knowing full well that there are 52 acres adjacent to the city limits that if we don't manage it, will be whatever they want. Now, I work with SCORBER, I'm going to tell you. I'm the city planner in two other jurisdictions, and they both have SCORBER product under construction and developed. And I have never had as fine a development group to work with as they have been. And I mean, I don't stand up in front of my public or my commissions or my council and tell you that, because that's not part of my job. But part of my job is to say who's good and who's not, and these guys are good.
I think they make beautiful comments. I think they're gorgeous, it's just, it's too high. That many, I just liked some of those beauty comments, they were gorgeous.
As we make a motion here.
I move.
So has he and I just, can we say what we have the force on the agenda and then just say, equal.
You can.
Michael said.
Yeah.
Because we didn't, we aren't good at shorthand.
Repeat that, please. Down, I'm going to give it to you.
Okay, okay.
And I'll give it to the deputy as well.
We're driving the lanes.
We're ready?
Any other questions? Can I put a question or a call? Do you have anything?
No, I was curious, townhomes came up. You said no townhomes. They're all going to be separate residences.
That's right.
Cottage is 1250, right?
Yes.
Wait, oh, earlier you said maybe, so now we're, yes, we're 1250?
No, that's the minimum. I showed you what the. Stop, stop. The ordinance says the minimum house size is 1250. They're part of market 1600.
Okay, gotcha.
Here we go. I move to approve.
To recommend approval.
To recommend approval. I'm going to ordinance amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance on approximately 11.8 acres of land in the Elizabeth A. Sheahan survey, abstract 1204 from residential estate, five acres, RE5, to plan development number 23, PD23. Approximately 0.06 acres in the John F. Daniel survey, abstract 364, from plan development number 12, or PD12, to plan development number 23, PD23. And approximately 52.42 acres in the W. Daniel survey, abstract 8.4, from the Oak Point Extraterritorial jurisdiction to plan development number 23, PD23. In addition to the.
Condition.
Condition on the gate and HOA management rules outlined by Mr. Cooper.
Perfect.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Jerry's opposed.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. With that, are there any other future agenda items?
No, but I would like to say one thing before we close. And one of the things I heard was a concern that you guys don't know what's going on. You can go to our website and sign up for notifications. And every time we post an agenda, you will get either a text message or an email letting you know that there's a new agenda posted. And that's, I mean, they're always available for you to look at on the website, but if you want something to alert you, that mechanism is in place. You just have to sign up for it.
And I want to thank everyone for coming, because I know that, you know, this is where you live, this is important to you, and we appreciate your input so much. And it is taken heart, and these things, even if you're not available to come when a plat comes through, we remember the concerns that are shared. So we will incorporate that in our discussion as well. And I would like to reiterate what Jenny just said too, because I sign up and I get a text message, I get a text message, I get an email. You know, any agenda that's posted, whether it's council, P&amp;Z, parks, and everyone meets the same day of the month, the second Tuesday of the month, is EDC, first Tuesday of P&amp;Z. So it's a good way to keep up on what's going on. And even if you can't come, just click on the link, it takes you right to the webpage. And you can look as soon as the agenda's posted, as soon as the packet of information is posted, it's available for you, you can see everything that's coming. So I would definitely recommend.
It's the same, it's the same packet that we're.
Yeah, everything we have is out on the media.
Usually the Friday before.
We have like three or four days to look at it. Same as.
Because it changes.
We got all of this information two hours before the meeting. We have the agenda, but I mean, the details.
And I apologize for that.
And that's my fault.
That was my fault.
Okay, with that, again, please, I want you to know, we appreciate all of your input, we really do. And hopefully, we felt the explain, because the processes are confusing and we're drawing as, you know, participating groups as well. And encourage anyone to, you know, if you're interested in being in P&amp;Z, let a council member know. So, or any of the, but it is a learning process, and you get to know the behind-the-scenes things. I can tell you, I was probably the most frustrated one about those trailer things that went up by fireworks. But we were sitting here in P&amp;Z, and we tried every which way.
That was COVID soon time.
Yeah, and we tried everything, but it's out of our area, and we don't have a say. And it was just.
Pre-adopted, Kane, we wouldn't have gotten it.
You know what?
Right? I said, had we adopted the previous development?
Oh, yeah.
That was a lot nicer. We wouldn't have got the trailer.
We missed an opportunity.
We missed the opportunity.
Because we didn't. Over one, because people, you know, didn't support it. So in any case, that's all news now, we're just trying to do the best we can moving forward.
Well, we have to manage for the interest of the individual and the best interest of the city too. The best negotiation usually results in everyone being equally disappointed.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, well, with that, we're going to adjourn the meeting at 8:24. Thank you, everybody.
Very good.
Thanks, sir.
All right, Brian.
John will be back next week, so.
Well.
Bring him with him.
You're going to send him to the lions.
Thank you. Thank you for helping us out of our time of being. I'm glad to.